Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for coming, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Walter Eichel. I'm the Norton Town Moderator. To my right is your town clerk, Lucia Longhurst. And I would like to officially call the Norton Town Meeting to order. As our first order business, we have a group of scouts from Troop 61 here in Norton, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So would everyone please rise and, boys, join us on stage?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stephen. The boys will now recite the scout oath and law.
On my honor, I will do my best, do my duty. And the scout law?
Would, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, fearful, courteous, brave, lean, and...
Thank you, boys. They're working on the law merit badge. Did you tell me, Mr. Two? Communications, I'm sorry, thank you. The scouts are working on the communications merit badge, which, if you're not familiar with the program, is a requirement for the Eagle Award. So this is a big moment and a big opportunity for them. So I would like to, I hope we can present to them a productive and friendly meeting. So let's keep that in mind. Thank you. Let's see, okay, so I would like to thank you all for taking the time and making the effort to attend our meeting. I would also like to thank our deputy moderator, Mr. Bill Gouvea, for officiating at the summer special town meeting while I was out of town. Is Mr. Gouvea here?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gouvea. Before we begin the meeting, I would like to go over some of the rules governing the meeting. If you are a registered voter, you may sit anywhere in this two-thirds or three-quarters of the auditorium. Non-voters will be in the top right quarter, from my point of view. So if you are a non-voter, you must be seated in the top right-hand corner there. If you wish to address the meeting, you may do so only after being recognized by the moderator. When you wish to speak, please move to one of the microphones, here, here, and up at the front. Please, when you speak, please state your name and address, so that the town clerk can record that information for the minutes of the meeting. Please try and keep your remarks brief, to the point, and make sure they are relevant to the article under discussion only. All speakers will be treated with respect and courtesy by the moderator and other attendees of the meeting. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individual. All remarks will be directed to the moderator, and while I will allow questions to be asked of individuals, I will not allow cross-examination of speakers. In recognizing people to speak, I will try to call upon those who have not spoken on the topic before, before those who have already spoken on the issue. I will entertain motions to move the question, but I will reserve my right as moderator to deny any motion to move the question if I think there is still discussion to be had. If a standing vote is required, you will be instructed to stand at your seats until the vote is counted. If a ballot vote is required, instructions will be presented then. If you wish to make an amendment to any motion, you must do so in writing and present it to the moderator and the town clerk. Please prepare your written amendment and bring it up here. If you want to move an article that has not been recommended by the Finance Committee, you must also present that motion to the clerk in writing. No motion to reconsider any article will be accepted by the moderator until at least three articles following that article have been acted upon by this meeting. This will not apply if the article is one of the last three of the warrant. So be aware that any article that you act on today can be reconsidered. So the Bill Gouvea Rule of Reconsideration means that if you came here, let's say, for Article Five, and the article passes, and you decide to leave the meeting, but three articles later, someone moves to reconsider the article. If reconsideration is successful, discussion and possible revoting on the article will continue. So be aware that the results of the voting are not permanent until the end of the meeting. There will be a process for non-voters to speak on certain articles, and it is up to the meeting to decide whether they are allowed to speak. But I remind you that outside speakers often have important, relevant facts that you will need to have when considering articles. So consider that when deciding to hear outside speakers. The speakers today, the outside speakers we have today are Ms. Lauren Goldberg, the town council. Other possible speakers are Steve Peterson from Western Sampson, and David Wallaka from Wallaka Real Estate Corporation. Ms. Chairperson, do I have a motion to allow outside speakers?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we vote to allow outside speakers to speak to the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Chairperson. All those in favor of allowing outside speakers to speak, please signify by raising your All those opposed? The motion to allow outside speakers passes. Okay, we will now move to the warrant. I'm sorry? Oh, okay, great, yes. I was gonna, okay, so, yes, please proceed.
Mr. Moderator, I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at Chatley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Attest: Michael J. May, a Constable of Norton, dated July 22, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to the warrant. Article One.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to pay the following unpaid bills incurred in a prior fiscal year, and as funding therefore, to transfer the sum of $1,935.01 from existing fiscal year 2022 funds in account number 001-192-570. This is for municipal building boiler equipment at the Police Department.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We will now open discussion on Article One. Any discussion on Article One? Seeing none, we will move to the vote. This vote requires a four-fifths for passage. If possible, I would like to encourage people to shoot for a unanimous vote, but we do need four-fifths. All those in favor of Article One, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article One passes by four-fifths margin, as determined by the moderator. Okay, thank you. I've been instructed to amend that. Article One passes by unanimous vote, as determined by the moderator. Article Two.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $225,274 from free cash to pay all outstanding separation expenses associated with the retirement of various employees from the town of Norton, and to authorize the town accountant, in consultation with the town manager, to allocate amounts to the appropriate departments.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Two? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. This article requires a majority for passage. All those in favor of Article Two, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Two passes by majority vote, as determined by the moderator. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article Six of the May 8, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant by increasing appropriations for certain line items, and as funding therefore, to raise and appropriate the amount of $59,840, and to transfer the amount of $704,628,000 from free cash, all as specified in the Finance Committee recommendations for Article Three of the October 25, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Three? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. This article requires a majority for passage. All those in favor of Article Three, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Three passes by majority vote, as determined by the moderator. Article Four fails for lack of a motion. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to clarify that the funding for the fiscal year 22 Sewer Enterprise operating budget, in the amount of $2,071,390, as approved under Article Five of the May 8, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, includes $1,991,390 from fiscal year 22 Sewer Enterprise receipts, including but not limited to fees, charges, interest, and miscellaneous revenues, and $80,000 from the West Main Street Sewer Betterment.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Five? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. This article requires a majority for passage. All those in favor of Article Five, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Five passes by majority vote, as determined by the moderator. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $800,000 from free cash to the capital improvements account.
Any discussion on Article Six? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Article Six requires a majority for passage. All those in favor of Article Six, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Six passes by majority vote, as determined by the moderator. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $383,952 from the capital improvements account to purchase or lease, with an option to purchase for periods of time up to or in excess of three years, new and/or replacement capital items for various town departments, including equipping any vehicles and all other incidental and related expenses, as specified in the Finance Committee recommendations for Article Seven of the October 25, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Seven? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Article Seven requires a two-thirds majority for passing. All those in favor of Article Seven, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Seven passes by two-thirds majority, as determined by the moderator. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to approve Article Eight, as printed in the October 25, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and to do so, to transfer the amount of $1 from free cash.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Eight? Yes, sir.
I'm Timothy Griffin, the Chair of the Norton Planning Board, 169 John Scott Boulevard. I just wanted to report that the Planning Board voted to recommend this article for town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any further discussion on Article Seven?
It's Article Eight.
I'm sorry. Oops, hang on, I wrote that in the wrong place, thank you. Yes, on Article Eight, thank you. Any discussion on Article Eight? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Article Eight requires a two-thirds majority for passage. All those in favor of Article Eight, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Eight passes by two-thirds majority, as determined by the moderator. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to transfer to the Select Board the care, custody, and control of the property located at Zero King Philip Road, also known as Assessor's ID 19-165-0, and authorize the Select Board to convey the town's right, title, and interest in said property for nominal consideration to the current owner thereof, said deed being necessary to correct an error in recording an instrument of redemption following the repayment of taxes, interest, and expenses owed to the town under a tax-taking.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Article Nine requires a two-thirds majority for passing. All those in favor of Article Nine, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Nine passes by two-thirds majority, as determined by the moderator. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to supplement the vote taken under Article Nine of the warrant at the October 21, 2019 town meeting, which vote authorized the Select Board to acquire for recreational trail-related purposes land and easements and parcels of land abutting and/or near North Washington Street, Cobb Street, Arrowhead Drive, Johnson Drive, Break Street, and Crane Street. By authorizing the Select Board to also acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain and for recreational trail construction, drainage, utility access, and/or related purposes, the fee to and/or easements in, on, and under the rail trail, portions of Break Street and Arrowhead Drive, and the other parcels of land approximately shown on plans entitled "Plan and Profile of Rail Trail Extension in the Town of Norton and Mansfield," a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. As said plan may be amended from time to time and/or as shown on an easement plan, and land within 200 feet of said parcels of land, to appropriate $700,000 to pay cost of acquiring the aforementioned interests and land that meets this appropriation. The treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to GL Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote. Less any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payments of costs approved by this vote in accordance with GL Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. And further, that the Select Board is authorized to enter into any and all agreements, execute instruments, and take any and all actions necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing transactions.
Good job, thank you.
Thanks.
Any discussion on Article Ten?
As you know, for several years, the Alternative Transportation Committee's been working on this project. It'll extend the bike trail from Mansfield to Crane Street, and five million, it's a $5 million project that will be paid for by the state and federal funds. What this is doing is authorizing the town to borrow up to $700,000 for easement acquisitions and any takings that we need for the project. Right now, we're just about at the 75% design, not quite there yet, but almost, and once that's done, then the appraisers can go out and appraise the properties that will need, we will need easements on our properties, that we will have to take some portion of the properties, so that the project can move forward. This is important tonight because the project is scheduled to be on the Transportation Improvement Plan in 2022, so if we miss a deadline, we could be bumped off of that, and we don't know when we'd get back on the Transportation Improvement Plan, and funding would be in jeopardy. So this will allow us to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Unis. Yes, ma'am. If you could go to one of the microphones, please.
My name is Catherine Conway. I live at 189 North Washington Street. I've circulated to some of you a letter that I wrote that should have been published in The Sun Chronicle before today, but my property, 11 feet of my property, and I ask all of you to go home and walk from your road, 11 feet up your front lawn, to see how much property that is and what you are left with for a front yard. This is over 3,000 square feet of frontage, and this is a historic part of town. My house was built in 1795, and it's, it's a task, but it's a loving task, to take care of an older house. But we should not be interfering with historical properties, the way that this very ill-planned bike trail is. So the state should have to go back to the drawing board and reconsider how to make this bike trail work, if it is so important to connect. They have many other options. It would probably require more than $5 million, but the money from the government seems to be almost at our doorstep, and it seems to me that they could do it the right way without taking by eminent domain vast amounts of citizens who pay their property taxes money. This is not a very good option. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Briggs. I live at 190 North Washington Street. I live across the street from Catherine. The proposal that is being put together is an inadequate plan. I have asked questions of the representative that came to my house, who said they want to take 25 feet off the road of my front yard. That's an awful lot of land, taking half my front yard away, where my leaching field is, by the way. So what's the town going to do about my septic system? That question can't be answered. You're taking 25 feet from my property and 11 from Catherine. Why are you widening the road by 35 feet, 36 feet? Makes no sense. Those answers can't be provided to me by anyone. I've asked to meet with the engineer, and the town manager can't seem to get a meeting to get a proper, detailed plan of how you plan on doing this. Now, today, we're here because you want to borrow money. You have no idea what it's going to cost to take eminent domain from us, or even offer some type of purchase price that we might agree on. None of that's been done. You don't even know how much that's going to cost, never mind having to redo my septic system or anything along those lines. So I think you're putting the cart in front of the horse here, without actually having more than 75% of a plan put together, and then there's major issues with public safety. You're taking lots of bicycles, putting them on a resident road. Instead, you could put an overpass on 495 that's dead-signated for the bike trail. But you don't want to go that route. But we don't know what route we want to go, but you want to talk about eminent domain already, without knowing what the impact's going to be, and what's the impact of the town when civil suits start taking place, which is the right of eminent domain. If we don't agree with your proposal of what our property's worth, we can go civilly in front of a jury trial. It's going to cost the town a lot more than that. You can take a look at what happened in Alaburu when they took eminent domain for the industrial park.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
William Francis, 66th Lane Street. This is the first I've heard of this, and I think that I know that I agree with the lady and the gentleman. We're talking about a historic home that lost its property by eminent domain, the idea that perhaps this is a well-thought-out, and I think this really needs some serious consideration. Historic homes are very important in any community. I mean, it shows we need the history, we need to look back and say, this is where people began, and this is where we have come so far. So I certainly, I support the lady and the gentleman that just spoke, and I would be opposed to any, any article that would take their property or modify the homes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on Article Ten? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sandy Oliver, 14 Tipping Place. I'm also the Chair of the Alternative Transportation Committee. We've been working on this project since 2013. We've had several public hearings about the project, sent out letters to the butters on several occasions, so this has been, you know, quite a long process and a long time coming. In terms of the specific concerns of butters, I know that each of the butters was given, whose property's being impacted, was given a letter, and they were encouraged to reach out to representatives of town to discuss impacts to their property. Specifically for Ms. Conway, her property, she did bring concerns up to the person she spoke with, who went back to the engineer, and they've already made changes to the design that would mitigate the impact to the property and to the trees on the property. So the request at the end of the letter that I received at the beginning of the meeting to go back to keep the bicycle, you know, trail off of North Washington Street, that has already, is already in progress in terms of working with the engineer. I would encourage anyone who isn't a butter, who has concerns of their property, we've been open through email, through our Facebook page, you can certainly reach out through the town hall, you can find me as the Chair of the Alternative Transportation Committee, reach out to me, please, and let me know what we can do to mitigate any concerns you have on your property. But this has definitely been a well, well-thought-out plan, and there also is, you know, because it's 75% design, that gives us the opportunity to make any, you know, smaller changes that would, would help out the owners that feel that they're being negatively impacted. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article Ten? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Christopher Keys. I live at 263 Godfrey Drive. I've had an opportunity to meet with all of the butters that reached out for information. Catherine's one of the butters, Mr. Briggs is another one. There are changes being, taking place with the design plan based upon feedback that both of them provided. They're not ready yet, but they will be presented of both parties to make sure that they understand that their concerns were certainly taken to heart by the design engineering for Beta. So just wanted to let you know, okay? Some more comments, does that's okay? Great, thank you. So just to kind of reel this back in a little bit, so from 1845 to 1859, the old colony rail trail, a rail line, transported people and goods from Boston to Fall River to Bedford and beyond. The railroad played an important role in the development of the town, connecting Norton in a way that a horse and buggy could not do. Forty years later, discussions began about putting an abandoned old colony rail right-of-way to use as a rail trail. Those discussions have continued for over 20 years since then without producing a Shen Hills trail. Finally, the opportunity to bring this long-awaited trail to fruition has come to the town of Norton. Imagine, in just a few years, that you can jump on the trail in Norton with your electric assist bicycle, travel on a safe, protected trail that'll take you through Taunton, down the Taunton River Trail, south to Somerset, at which point you turn left Taunton River Trail, south to Somerset, at which point you turn left onto the South Coast Bike Way, which will take you safely across the newly-constructed Bourne Bridge, over the Cape Cod Canal, and onto the Cape Cod Rail Trail to Wellfleet and beyond. Or if you turn right at Somerset, you can ride safely on the East Coast Greenway north to Callas, Maine, at the Canadian border, or south to Key West, Florida. Pretty amazing. Sort of sounds like what the railroads did back in the 1800s, doesn't it? We owe it to ourselves, to our children, and future generations not to leave our town behind by missing out on this alternative transportation transformation. And how can we leave a $5 million federal investment in our community on the table? There is overwhelming evidence that rail trails bring tremendous benefits to the communities where they exist. Those benefits span from health and wellness, community connection, and enhanced economic activity. Many rail trails have Friends Group, which work diligently with town officials and the community to ensure the successful operation and maintenance of the rail trail. The fine residents of Norton will undoubtedly do the same. So I'd ask everyone to please vote in support of this rail trail article this evening to ensure that Norton is connected to the alternative transportation future in 2021 in the same way that the town of Norton chose to connect with the railroad future of 1845. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Conway.
I'd just like to state in response to the speaker just before, Mr. Keys, that I never received a letter until June of 2021, and as an abutter, I certainly would have responded to any letter that threatened a historical property on this curve in North Washington Street, on North Washington Street. And I think as citizens, we would probably get behind an eminent domain confiscation of property if it were for a hospital, a road, a school, but not to re-engineer a historic road. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Go ahead first and then we'll answer.
Fred, Fred Briggs again. I just want to respond to some comments that Mr. Keys made. So I'm going to sell you something I haven't developed yet, so pay me now and get funding now, and pay me now, and I'll tell you later on what I'm going to develop. That's what he's saying. He doesn't have a plan, he's going to give us, give it to us later on, but we're going to fund it now. Makes no sense. What revenue is this bike trail going to bring to town of Norton? Nothing. Nothing at all. So let's spend $700,000, $800,000, $1,000,000 and get no recurring revenue, but you reduce my property value, my taxes are going to go down because my property's worthless money. So the town's losing money by putting this bike trail in, along with Catherine's property, property on Cobb Street, and et cetera. The town's going to lose revenue.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
William Francis, 66th Plain Street. I, with the gentleman, I have to say that, you know, we're all amazed and of the age of trains and railroads, but I think the point, the point here is that this, this, there's a lady have an historical home. I don't know if it's registered, is it registered on the books? Okay, I think we ought to take a look first to see if that is actually able to be registered on the historical list of historical homes before any other, before anything else proceeds. A lot of towns, if you have an historical home, if there's even a question that you have an historical home, there's a whole new committee that's set up, a lot of investigation is done to see if that actually qualifies to be registered as a historical home. So before we go out and start digging roads up and lawns, I think that, that information needs to be ascertained first and looked, and look at this more carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Unis.
I'd like to just reiterate what Mr. Keys had said, that because of Mrs. Conway's concerns, that the plans were redone and are being redone to help out her property, and I'd be more than happy to meet with Ms. Conway and Mr. Briggs. I, I think you'll find that the work that's being done on North Washington, for the most part, is being done within the layout of, of North Washington. I think a lot of times people assume they own to where the edge of the road is, but actually, North Washington Street's a lot wider than it's laid out right now. So they, they will be putting a sidewalk in on North Washington, and there will be some grading and some utility, overhead wire changes, and I'd be more than happy to talk to them, but that's why we're not fully at 75% yet because we're, we're still working in the process. And so I hope the town will support this so that everything can move forward.
I certainly understand. I certainly understand that the town owns the first four feet of all of our properties, and I say, go ahead, take the four feet, take an additional three feet, but don't take 11 feet. Whether you leave my trees that are over 100 years old or you just cut them down, they're going to be damaged. The roots will completely be damaged by the construction that's going to be done to take away this property through eminent domain. This is not what eminent domain was designed for.
Mr. Briggs.
Peter Wiggins, 157 Metzger Ave., and I'm all for the rail trail project because people need a, people can use any trail I got, and yours truly, like this here, I can use a trail often. Great?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Julie Oakley. I live at 6 Beverly Lane. I'm an abutter to the rail trail across from my property, and I just want to say that I'm here in support of the project. I see a lot of people who currently use the rail and it's given state, and it's not exactly, I would say, safest place to be, especially if you're younger or older, you're on the trail. I'm personally looking forward to having this above my property because I think it will really benefit the community and the surrounding neighborhood that I live in personally, and I think it will make it a much more utilized, better taken care of, and the grass will be so high, and it's just a little dirt path that, you know, a lot of people utilize now. So I'm looking forward to having it be developed to match what's in Mansfield and be a great connection point to the surrounding community.
Thank you. Mr. Gervais.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I just want to point out that this article allows the Board of Selectmen, oh, I'm sorry, the Select Board to enter into negotiations and to enter into agreements to acquire the property, and it gives them the funding that makes it available. They can't really make an agreement unless there, there is going to be funding available to do that. So this does not, if you wrote this in the affirmative tonight, it does not mean that's a done deal. It does not mean any land is taken. It means that the Selectmen then have the ability, the Select Board then has the ability to go forward, negotiate, make changes, and do things that will do it. I will tell you, I haven't always been in favor of this project. I'm kind of a, a late bloomer to the project. Maybe that's, that's, maybe, it's definitely because when my brother was 14 years old, he rode his minibike down that trail and crossed over Plain Street and got hit by a car and lost his leg. So the idea of riding a bicycle down that whole thing didn't actually appeal to me very much. But that rail, that trail is used by people. That trail is going to have vehicles on it. You can ask anybody who lives around it that it's going to be done. It should be done in a safe way, it should be done in a protected way. I know members of our Select Board, I've known this, members of past Select Boards, I can't think of a Select Board person who is going to stand up and take advantage of a, a property owner and historic property. I believe they're going to make every attempt, to make every concession to try to make sure that the deal is done and that it's done in a way that doesn't aggravate them. That has nothing to do with votes, it has to do with the fact that they own homes too. They're our neighbors, they're our friends, they're our people who, who know. So I would disagree with, with one of the speakers. This is exactly what eminent domain it is for, to take a piece of property to serve the public good. This is a good project. This project has been going on forever. I mean, it has been a long time. I'm old enough to remember when trains actually came down, you know, those paths, but then again, I'm pretty old. So this is definitely a step up. This is something that serves the community. Imagine a beautiful rail trail all the way to Mansfield, and then you got to put your bike in your car and drive down because Norton doesn't want to, doesn't want to put itself up, doesn't want to do anything. This is why we can't have nice things. This is, this is why we have to do these things. I would scream bloody murder if I thought we were, you know, taking down some great historic, you know, thing. My grandparents lived for most, all, for most of my life at 39 North Washington Street, right near the railroad tracks. I mean, literally, you, they go right out of the yard, and you're over the railroad tracks. So I understand this, this property really well. This is a good thing. It's a good thing for the town, it's a good thing for the people in other communities, and it's something we should do. Don't let this fail now.
Thank you, Mr. Gervais. Yes, sir.
Keith Silva, 120 Plain Street. I'd like to move the question.
I see a speaker behind you that has not spoken yet, so I would like to offer her the opportunity before I accept that motion.
Thank you. Marianne Johnson, 208 Bay Road. This is actually the first I've ever heard of this eminent domain, domain happening tonight from these two residents. So I do have some questions. You know, some things have been mentioned that there are other ways without taking their property. I guess I'd like to hear what those other ways are. I would not want to be in their situation where my land is being taken from me and I have absolutely no say or no choice. I 100% support the rail trail. I think it's exciting, I'm really excited for it to come to the town, but not at residents' expense. So, you know, my big question would be, what are these other ways that this can be done? Because several people have mentioned that tonight that are in, in favor of this plan, that there are other options. So if there are other options, why take these people's property? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion on the floor to move the question. The motion to move the question is not debatable and requires a two-thirds majority. So we'll now vote on moving the question. If the, if moving the question passes, debate will be cut off and we will move immediately to the vote. If the motion to move the question fails, debate will continue. So just to be clear, we are voting on moving the question, and now vote to move the question requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? The motion to move the question passes. We will now move to the vote. Let me just get my notes in place here. So we are now voting on Article 10. Article 10 requires a two-thirds vote to pass. All those in favor of Article 10, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article 10 passes by two-thirds majority as determined by the moderator. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to accept the 2021 master plan for the town of Norton as approved by the Town of Norton Planning Board, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk and posted on the Town of Norton website.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 11? Mr. Griffin.
Hello again, I'm Tim Griffin, the chair of the Norton Planning Board, 169 John Scott Boulevard. So just to give everybody a quick summary here, the master plan is a non-binding document in terms of the framework to help guide the town's objectives during the next 10 years. Everybody, there was a handout there at the table if you came in, not sure if everybody got it, but, again, it's a supposed plan, it's about 10 years. Norton's last master plan was done in 1998. I didn't major in math, but I think we're off by a little bit there. The information that went into the master plan was collected during a number of public information sessions from 2019 to, through 2021, both physical and virtual. 150 people participated in those sessions. There, and we actually went through every single page of this master plan over, I think, three different public hearings of the planning board. So the plan has seven core sections, so land use, housing, economic development, open space, natural, cultural resources, services, facilities, and transportation circulation. That crosses a whole lot of things. Some of these things are already, will take years of planning, some of them are more quick hitters, some of them are already in motion, such as building a new town hall and, and Community Support Center building, and some are ongoing and will continue to be, such as protecting conservation lands managed by the Conservation Commission. Pretty much every action in the plan will require more actions via this body or other means, and the document lays out more than 25 different committees, boards, stakeholders, or everybody else's responsible parties to help bring these to completion. So approving the master plan, again, is non-binding, doesn't change anything about the town's bylaws or the role itself. Approving it is just an endorsement of the plan as a whole, with the understanding that everybody who is highlighted in those different sections is going to be bringing all of those changes forward throughout the next decade and beyond. Step away, go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Wiggins.
Yes, Peter Wiggins, 157 Metzger Ave., and I'm all for a new, a master plan because I go to town lots and lots of times and I see the scenery says what could go in there, what transportation can go in there, what kinds of places going to, and I'll offer the master plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 11? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Excuse me, Kelly Gallagher, 201 Bay Road. So I guess my first question is, I'm not very familiar with this, is if this is non-binding, then why do we have to vote on it? And then I saw on the Serpide website, there was a September 8th announcement stating that draft, excuse me, the draft master plan is nearly done and heading to the fall annual town meeting. An information session will be held on September 9th. Another, another post on the Serpide homepage without a date states, "The final Norton Master Plan is nearly done and heading to the fall annual town meeting." Can you please tell us when the final master plan was finished? The master plan document is about 130 pages long. I think we need more time to read it, we come up with some questions, it just gets a little premature to vote on this tonight, and I think maybe we should go to this around the spring town meeting after we've had some time to review it. And then I saw one of the main bullet points of the master plan was to protect aquifers and water resources. And call me cynical, but I'd just like to know how we can trust that that's a truthful statement when this town improperly approved an industrial project with 300,000 pounds of toxic batteries over an aquifer, over a well protection zone in a flood plain and in a place designated as an area of critical environmental concern? Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin.
Just a quick response, the, the master plans are governed by Mass General Law, which, Chapter 41, Section 81D, or at least that's what Town Council has put in here. So, so master plans by Mass General Law need to be approved by the town's legislative body, which is us. I apologize if you feel like you haven't had a chance to review the master plan. As I said, we went through, you said 130 pages, we went through every- We went through every single one of those pages over three different meetings and had different people weigh in at various times. Again, it's non-binding. If you'd like to discuss any specific item in that document, happy to do so. I believe, I think the final question you asked was about when the final document was delivered. I'm sure, Paul Caduvia, just respond to that.
Hi, I'm Paul De Giuseppe, the Planning Director. The final draft was, was developed on the last meeting that the Planning Board authorized it to go to town meeting, which, don't remember the, the specific date, but it was mid to the end of September. And that's the version we have in front of you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 11? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Article 11 requires a majority for passage. All those in favor of Article 11, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article 11 passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator. Article 12. Article 12 fails for a lawful motion.
Mr. Moderator, William Francis, 66 Plain Street. I'm the petitioner, and I make a motion to move this article to the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Would you like to speak to the article?
I would.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a second as well. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Francis, yes?
Thank you. I prepared a few comments. It's gonna take a few minutes to read, so I ask that everyone deal with me. So I'm bringing this out of the forward and asking for an extension of time to the comment by law, which states that the connection to the common sewer must be completed within five years of availability, or the abudders are fined $100 a day. I want to repeat that, fined $100 a day. Everyone else either does not have to connect to this sewer, or receives a low 20-year loan, low-cost 20-year loan, to pay for the connection and betterment fees as a result of this financial setbacks, and as a, excuse me, as a result of financial setbacks and personal losses caused by the coronavirus. I think it's only fair that my neighbors and I, as well as other people in the same situation, have more time to pay the connection fees. There are other issues I want to address, but I specifically want to address the situation on Pine Street and Plain Street. First, I have to have a little history. When this sewer line was installed in 2016, I spoke with the former Selectman, Mr. Kimball. He told me that Wheaton College septic system had been failing for years, and something had to be done about it. He told me due to cost issues, the town made an agreement with Wheaton College, and this agreement allowed Wheaton College to run a pressurized sewer line from its sewer collection tanks out to Pine Street, and then turns east down to Plain Street and ends at LG Norris Elementary School. From that point on, the sewage would be gravity-fed and connected to the Mansfield sewage line, which then would flow to the Mansfield Treatment Plant. This agreement saved Wheaton College and the town a lot of money, and it also allowed the Sewer Department to design a sewer which would prevent an estimated, oh, I think it was 78 houses, 78 homes, excuse me, 78 home owners from connecting. And by interpreting a small phrase in the town law, in the town bylaw, and that phrase is "of availability," this means due to the fact that a line is pressurized, all the abudders do not have availability to the common sewer. The nine houses on the gravity-fed side do have availability to the common sewer because it is not pressurized. Therefore, they are required to connect within five years or face a $100 fine. To me, this is a tortured twist of words. The common sewer pipeline is directly outside in the street. The abudders on the west side of LG Norris simply can't access, can't access it due to its pressurized state. The best analogy I can think of is in healthcare. We all are familiar with that, with that issue. Healthcare is available, but for various reasons, not accessible to everyone. So is the common sewer pipe available? I would say yes, it is. Is it accessible to everyone on Pine Street and Plain Street? I would say no. Also, one more point, by denying the homes along the pressurized portion of the sewer line, the Sewer Department forfeits $693,000 in connection fees. Also, another $360,000 could have been loaned at the rate of 5% through the Health Department Betterment Loan, which is sponsored by the state. Also, the Sewer Department misses out on the fees, or they lose the fees of the 60 to 78 homes with the quarterly sewage fees that would be charged. Now, if you don't mind, I just want to talk about the houses and businesses that abut the common sewer on Main Street. Although the abudders are given five years to connect, and if they delve, the Sewer Department gives the abudders a 20-year low-cost loan to pay for the connection and betterment fees, and places lean on the property till the loan is paid, there is no $100 a day fee. Now, I just want to repeat that. There is no $100 a day fee. The Main Street Project, its purpose is to promote business opportunity. The Wheaton College Project saves Wheaton College and the town money at the expense of the homeowners. It prevents homeowners abutting the pressurized line from connecting and demands the abudders on the gravity side, gravity-fed side, connect to the sewer line or face an extremely harsh, as I said, $100 a day fine, which if you want to expand it, is $36,000 a year. And I want to emphasize, there are no loans available to pay for the $11,550 connection fee from the Sewer Department, Health Department, or town for us who must connect on Plain Street. Mr. Moderator, I have to ask if there is something wrong with this picture. Are not the laws of the town, the state, the country supposed to apply to everyone equally? There's supposed to be an even application of the law? Or do my neighbors and I just live on the wrong side of the tracks, so to speak? Does the Sewer Department and the town have a right to pick winners and losers? I talked to some of my neighbors abutting the pressurized line side of the street, and they told me they would have, they would have gladly connected to the sewer line. Some have septic systems that were installed in 1985. Others say they could have expanded and maybe added a garage in addition to their house. When I mentioned the $100 fine to a homeowner, he just looked at me and said, "That, that is just plain wrong." In addition, a little over three years into the five-year connect, connect period, the state, the country, and the whole world came to a sudden stop and shut down due to the COVID-19 epidemic. People lost loved ones and jobs were lost. The world as we knew it has turned upside down. I don't mind telling you, Mr. Moderator, personally for me and my family, the last 18 months have been terrible. We suffered significant personal and financial loss, and I don't mind saying that because I am no different than anyone else here at this meeting. Ironically, at the last meeting I attended with the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Hannah, the retiring president of Wheaton College, thanked the town, especially the town manager, for all the help the college received from the town during the last 18 months. I believe he said, "We, as in the college, would have not made it without your help and support." Now, Wheaton College has an endowment of $210 million, and they acquired help from the town. Mr. Moderator, I asked if Wheaton College was given all the help and support it needed, why do nine owners of modest homes on Plain Street get, as we emerge, what do we get as we emerge from this pandemic and are met with high inflation and supply shortages and a possible looming, looming recession? We are met with a demand of $11,550 in cash. And if we don't pay it, then we're going to be fined $100 a day. Mr. Moderator, my neighbors and I have tried to work early with the Sewer Department in the hopes of finding a solution to our problem, but have been met with indifference, and I would even say contempt. I won't say their names, but I have talked with the number, a couple of the former Department, Sewer Department heads, and one fellow, when I tried to talk to him, we immediately got into an argument. And he kept telling me he was just the enforcer. "I'm the enforcer of this law. And basically, if you don't, if you don't tie in, you're going to be hearing from me." And then he said, "I was the ringleader. I'm the ringleader." I mean, Mr. Moderator, if I talk to my neighbors about concerns regarding the bylaw, and does that make me a ringleader? Since when should any taxpaying citizen in this town exercising his right to free speech be concerned about condemnation and retribution from a town official? Another member told me flat out and told my neighbors, "If it was up to me, you wouldn't get anything." Now, I'll mention his name because Mr. Grant's...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I would appreciate if you could stick to the, the substance of the article.
Thank you, sir. I'm trying to, I just think this is a poignant point.
I'm gonna disagree with you on that. Would you please stick to the substance of the article?
Very well, sir. Thank you. At this point in time, I just want to, to say that the Board and Sewer Department, they have $2.5 million in revenue. And before I close out, I would like to say that I want to tell you about the people who are being impacted by this law. There's a public servant trying to raise his children with college bills, a retired couple on a fixed income, a disabled veteran and his wife trying to raise a child, a single parent and a young couple with a child who just purchased a home. Now, I told the Finance Committee and the Sewer and the Select Board that we are reasonable people. We'd like to see a win-win situation here, and not I win, you lose. So in that, in the spirit of goodwill, I would certainly like to amend my article and change the connection time from 10 years to seven years. I'll bring that paperwork up to you in a second. There's a small, there's a saying that small towns live or die based on relationships, and I would like to see the relationship in this town improve between the people and the town government. Mr. Moderator, I thank you of time, I thank you for your time, and I thank the people for their time here at the meeting, and I appeal to the good people of this town, and I ask for their support. Thank you.
I just wanted to speak on one, one thing on what Mr. Francis said, just in case anyone gets the assumption that Wheaton got some kind of sweetheart deal. Wheaton paid $4.7 million for that sewer project. Mr. Francis, I've been informed that you need to make a second change to your amendment. You mentioned the, the duration in the second paragraph, but not the first. So, I'm sorry, other way around. So you need to correct your amendment to mention the, the date in both places, please.
Inserting afterwards.
By inserting afterwards.
Maybe amended from time to time. Or within seven years of availability of such comment.
Or within seven years of availability of such sewer. Does that make sense, Mr. Francis?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, I, the second paragraph, that's, that's a private one. I don't think there is any, time factor. Just wants to, that's available.
Ms. Goldberg, would you like to clarify your point?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Lauren Goldberg from Kekelaw. Then you should probably strike the phrase "whichever shall occur sooner" because there's, it doesn't seem like it reads consistently in that second. "The occupant of a building abutting on a private way in which a common sewer was installed either prior to or after this bylaw shall, upon a violation, as it, or as it may be amended from time to time, whichever shall, of course, occur sooner." I just, I'm not sure what that means without it here, I believe. Sorry. And I, I'm sorry, and I do believe, Mr. Moderator, I'm gonna double-check right now, that the existing bylaw does include a connection date, so let me double-check that.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. I know you're waiting to speak. We, we need to clarify the amendment before we can begin discussion, so if you could bear with us for one minute. So, Mr. Francis, are you comfortable with making the change, Ms. Goldberg, Ms. Scrub?
I believe, I believe so. And, Mr. Moderator, as long as it states that the, the time, that type of bylaw, as it may be amended from time to time or within...
Okay, great. All right, so, and check me on this, Mr. Francis, I will read the amendment. So we're changing paragraph two of Article 13 to the following verbiage. "The owner or occupant of any building upon land abutting on a private or public way in which a common sewer was installed utilizing only private funding either prior to or after this bylaw shall, upon violation of Title V of the State Sanitary Code, as it may be amended from time to time, connect the same therewith by a sufficient drain, including any owner or occupant who is subject to an order to connect dated on or before the effective date of this bylaw."
Now, Mr. Moderator, excuse me for interjecting. I want that to apply to the municipal funding. I want that to apply to the municipal funding. As the owner of the building and land abutting on a private way in which a common sewer was installed utilizing municipal funding, I believe that's what that says.
Did I just speak there? Okay, sure, Ms. Goldberg.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I believe that the words whichever shall occur sooner in the second paragraph are what we're talking about, striking, and changing the, in the first paragraph, the number of ten years to seven years.
That is-
And I am reminded by the town manager that this article appeared in somewhat of the same form several years ago, in 2015, there was a floor amendment, and it looks like those words, whichever shall occur sooner, were left in there by accident, by the floor amendment. So my suggestion is, let's just take care of it, if this were to pass, it will say the right thing.
Very well, then, long as it stays at seven, they'd be changed to seven years.
Okay, so the other change is, paragraph one, delete ten years and replace it with seven. And in paragraph two, delete whichever shall occur sooner. Is that correct, Mr. Francis? Okay, great, thank you, Ms. Goldberg. So, is everyone clear on those two changes that the amendment proposes? So those changes to both paragraph one, the number of years, and paragraph two, the whichever shall occur sooner? So we will now discuss the amendment to the main article. Yes, sir?
Frank Parker, four Allen Drive. I'm not unsympathetic to the situation that the people on Plain Street are in, and no one, believe me, I don't believe anyone should be treated in the way that they were, but I don't believe this bylaw is the correct way to address that situation. I want to make sure that everyone in the room is aware that this is not an extension just for this problem. Changes to this bylaw would affect any, in perpetuity, any additional connections to the sewer until this bylaw got changed again. So it's not just an additional two years for these nine houses, it's an additional two years for anyone to pay along the sewer. That has impacts to the plan that the Water and Sewer Commission has. They put together a master plan and budget based on a five-year period, and that, the addition to seven years would impact that. Certainly, seven years, I believe, is more palatable than the ten years that was initially suggested. But I just want to make sure that people are clear that it is for all projects, not just for these nine houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any further discussion? Mr. Campbell?
So I guess the question would be, why are we here today talking about this? I think we have to remember that just a few years ago, we moved the timeline as far as when people had to make the connection from two years to five years. The reason why we did that was because within two years seemed to be too fast, you know, everything had to be done so soon. The problem is that the board of selectmen at the time of this last project, and I want to be clear about a couple of things, I was on the bullet, a couple of things I want to be clear about. It wasn't just Wheaton benefiting from this change, it wasn't Public Crows that also benefited from the project because we were able to make the connections to all those municipal buildings that we didn't, weren't able to do so. I live on Plain Street, I'm on the section that's not accessible to the new sewer. I would have gladly made the connection, but I was not able to do so because the sewer line going from my house. One thing everyone has to be clear about, though, is whether it be two years, five years, or seven years, if the Title V system fails, you're gonna connect. If there's a municipal line in front of your house, and you go to either sell your home or make improvements on your home, or make an addition on your home, you still have to connect to the sewer line prior to five years that it is now. Adding two more years to the scenario probably would help the homeowners as far as the cost of making the connection. Where the board of selectmen at that time failed was that we didn't realize, we made the assumption that financing was still available like any other project we'd already done in town. Now we find that that's not the case. So I'm inclined to agree with the seven-year moratorium, giving these people the opportunity to do so. I would also encourage Bill or anyone else to maybe come back to future town reading and see if that could be the seven or nine homes that are impacted, could somehow fall under the low average or the low income financing, to make it more feasible to make the connection over a period of time. If they sell the house in the meantime, they have to make the connection. So it really wasn't a fair way to do it to these few homeowners. At the same time, increasing it from five years to seven years for everyone could help, maybe help the burden of what some people are dealing with these days based on the recent pandemic that's been through. And I think that would be only helpful. So going to seven years is not something I'm totally opposed to, but I am concerned and, I guess I apologize for not realizing that the financing wouldn't be available where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Yes, sir, you were right. Do you want to address the amendment or the main article? Okay, we're discussing the amendment right now, so I need to focus discussion on just the amendment as I describe the two changes. Ma'am, you adjusting the amendment?
Yes, hi, I'm Susan Francis, I'm Will's wife, I live at sixty-six Plain Street. I guess, as I've seen this play out over five years, it's been extraordinarily frustrating trying to understand all of what went on, trying to get a clear picture, trying to understand what happened and what didn't happen, all the while knowing that we have a short end to stick. So thank you, Bob, for what you just said, that means a lot. The issue for us has been not if we wanted to tie in, but could we get the low interest financing? We have been trying to get an answer to that for years, and it depends on who you talk to, and what color, whether it's sunny one day or raining the next. Excuse my frustration, you can't get a straight answer. We were told, that's not available to you. It has something to do with how it was written, with the agreement with Wheaton College. Nobody seems to be able to tell us what happened and why. We'd like to know why we can't access that financing. We wouldn't be here tonight if we were able to access that financing. So who can help? I want an answer as to why we can't have that. Maybe that's off topic, but it's really important. And what's most disturbing is that there's no continuity, and it just doesn't seem like folks are being honest. It seems like some deal went down, and, okay, maybe Wheaton did come up with four point whatever million, that's nice, but why not take the time and make a plan that's methodical and make sure that it's applied evenly and that the proper funding and financing is there for people? It just seems like it was a quick deal. So we're left, nine houses, five years, with the strain of this and the stress of this, and here we are tonight, trying to ask for just two more years to be able to come up with the money. Okay? Because we're stuck, our hands are tied. If we don't tie in, we're gonna be charged a hundred dollars a day, which is outrageous, absolutely outrageous. So I just wanted to say those things, I'm not sure that it changes anything, but I just wish that things could be more transparent and communicative and collaborative with the town owners and the taxpayers. Thank you.
I'd like to remind everyone, we are still discussing the amendment. Excuse me a minute. We have a clarification from Town Council that the way this article, the way the amendment is written, this is adding seven more years to the timeline of connecting to the service, not just two years, two seven years, but adding seven years to the current connection time. So is that your intention, Mr. Francis?
No, Mr. Moderator, the way I read it, this is retroactive, so this begins.
Okay. Okay, we have further clarification that you are correct, Mr. Francis. Thank you.
I don't mean to laugh, but I guess there's a dox humor to this all, but unfortunately, it really isn't that funny.
Excuse me, are you gonna, are you addressing the amendment?
I am, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, yes, I am. The board of selectmen, when I had a meeting with them, they were asked, I'm not sure if it's John Bishop, because everyone uses their first name, it's pretty informal for subjects so serious, but John, I think his name was, represented in the Water Department, and he was asked point blank, how much, what would the impact be to the Water and Sewer Department? They didn't have an answer. A thousand, two, two thousand, three, a hundred thousand dollars. There's no real answer, they don't know. So I don't think it's fair that you can say that this would have long-lasting impact on their plans, especially if they have two point five million dollars in reserve. As far as the additional two years, this, because the way this article is written, it's easy to amend just on the timeframe. So I would not be opposed to coming back in two years, and once again, just restoring it back to the five. I would not be opposed to having some sort of a sunset clause put on this, so that after the two years is expired, it automatically goes back to five. I don't have the expertise to write that in. If it can assist from Town Council, I'd be more than willing to agree to that, and I'm sure my neighbors would also. The whole point is, it seems like everyone else in the town that's being, has this council laid in front of them, they're receiving low cost, low interest cost loans over a twenty year period. That's why I thought the original amendment, the original article, ten years, if they get twenty years to pay back a low-cost loan, why can't we get ten years to save the necessary money? But then I want to be a good sport about this, so to speak, and I want to be fair. I don't want to impact anybody unnecessarily, but we're the ones who are being impacted. Great. So I would appreciate if there's any help from Town Council, that if there's any assurances, any way we can write it in, that after two years, it's a sunset, then I would agree to that, but we need the two years more in order to recuperate from this devastating pandemic period. Thank you.
Mr. Yanis, would you like to, sir?
Yeah, I think there's some confusion over when a low-interest loan's referred to. So homeowners can get a low-interest loan from the water health, the cost of the construction to tie into the sewer. And I think what's being referred to as a low-cost loan is the West Main Street project, I believe, and the chairman can correct me if I'm wrong, is the first project that the Water and Sewer has done that is done by betterments. So whether people along West Main Street tie in or don't tie in, they start paying on day one, because there's a lien put on their property, and it's a twenty-year lien, and they stop paying day one on that lien, whether they tie into the sewer or they don't tie into the sewer. And when they sell their property, they have to pay that note off, or if they refinance, they probably have to pay that note off. And so it's not a low-interest loan, it's a betterment.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Any further discussion on the amendment to Article thirteen?
Mr. Moderator, William Francis. The pending question is, why didn't we get a better one? I agree, I agree with the town manager. You can get a, you can get a low, you can get a five percent interest loan to run the drain from your house down to the sewer line, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the eleven thousand five hundred fifty dollars, that you have to come up with the cash within a five-year period during probably one of the most devastating times in the entire world, and we're just asking for a little bit more time. We come out at the end of this faced with shortages, inflation, and I read an article recently, this is, a recession is looming. Now, we all know what a recession is, right? That's when your neighbor loses his job.
Excuse me-
Yes, sir.
You're drifting off the substance of the article, so-
I apologize.
Anything else to add to the amendment?
No, sir. Thank you.
Any further discussion on, yeah, Mr.-
Timothy Griffin, one sixty-nine, John Scut Boulevard, can I move the amendment?
Yes, yes, we can move the amendment, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to move the amendment. As the last motion, the motion to move the article, we will now take a vote to determine whether we will continue discussion on the amendment to Article thirteen. If you vote to move the question, we will move immediately to vote. If the motion to move the question, if the amendment fails, we will continue discussion on the amendment. Motion to move the question requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of moving discussion of the amendment to Article thirteen, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? The motion to move the amendment to Article thirteen passes, we will now move to the vote on the amendment. So this is just the two changes to Article thirteen, the seven years and the removal of the whichever shall occur sooner text. So we are voting on the amendment to Article thirteen. And I'd just like to confirm with council, two-thirds vote? The amendment is a majority, thank you. And the amendment requires a majority vote for passage. So is everyone clear on what we're voting on? We're voting on the amendment to Article thirteen. All those in favor of the amendment to Article thirteen as modified, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? The amendment to Article thirteen passes. We will now return to discussion on the main article, Article thirteen. And this gentleman has been very patient, I'd like to introduce your first name.
Steve Bishop, Water and Sewer Department, excuse me, Chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission. The article in question is specifically requesting to amend a town bylaw which regard, which in regard to connection to municipal sewer, extending required connection timeframe for five to ten years. I know we just, we talked about the amendment, that's different, I just apologize, I didn't write that. It is important to note that the reason there is a bylaw at all in this regard is because the town is aware of the significant investment made with extending common sewers into identified deed areas of town, such as the school, and the need to support and protect the investment. The bylaw was initially voted in nineteen ninety-nine at town meeting with a two-year timeframe to connect, and was subsequently modified in two thousand fifteen after much debate, five years. The current five-year timeframe is intended to be forgiving to the impacted properties, and is already longer than what is allowed by most similar communities. It is also important to note that the cost to operate and maintain the wastewater collection and treatment system are borne by the actual users of the system, and the system extends, expands, these costs go up. So without connecting additional users funded by expanded system, the cost per existing user goes up in the interim. So the expansion and extension of the municipal sewers is not random, a great deal of planning and money goes into the process, and the intent that fronted properties benefit from this work will connect to pay the share of the cost of the important infrastructure. For these basic reasons, continuing to extend the connection timeframe is not something that the Water and Sewer Commission supports, so. This one's that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Is there further discussion on Article thirteen? Mr. Graber?
Mr. Moderator, I understand there's a problem here, but I think we're also missing the larger point. To me, this is like having a really bad and serious infection- To me, this is like having a really bad and serious infection on your finger and treating it by amputating your arm. It, this does, there's got to be a way to address the legitimate problems of the residents along Pine Street without totally changing the entire framework of how we do these connections. We need to understand that, you know, we've had sewers for a long time. The whole idea of sewers and the enterprise account and all this is that the users pay for it. We spent all kinds of money that we wrote to extend sewer lines and then we don't have people joining them. So that rather than the expense being paid by the users as was intended when we passed the law, now we're all as a town paying for that shortfall because we're not connecting the users. To give everybody two more years doesn't make any sense. It just doesn't. I would rather defeat this article, which I don't think is well constructed and I don't think makes sense. And I would, you know, first of all, I've been in town for a long time. I've never met anybody who's been fined this one hundred dollars a day. I, maybe the Water and Sewer Commissioners can tell me, but I wouldn't be surprised if a dime has ever been collected from a hundred dollar fine, you know, a debt. I just don't think it's enforced and I don't think it happens. It's used as leverage. But there's got to be a way to sit down with these good people on Pine Street to negotiate something in this unique situation without going in and throwing the baby over the bathwater and changing all of this rule. You've got to get people connected to your sewer system. If you give up the leverage you have to get people connected to the sewer system, the longer you go, the more expensive it is to all the taxpayers and you've already spent all this money. You've got to get people connected. Otherwise, we should have never spent the money to front all these sewers because apparently we had no intention of ever making people connect to them and use the, you know, use the service that we did. So I've got to believe that between the select board, the water commissioners, Town Council, you know, anybody else that has to get involved, there's got to be a way to fix this without giving two more years for all the people that haven't connected and then should connect to make the sewer system work.
Thank you, Mr. Gavere. Mr. Francis?
Mr. Moderator, I thank Mr. Gavere for his comments. I don't, I want to just go back to the, Mr. Bishop. I don't find his argument convincing and I know because we certainly have the facts written in front of us. If they were concerned about making sure that people tie in, you know, connect to this common sewer, then they would have definitely had all the people on Pine Street and then all the way up Plain Street, which totals actually seventy-eight houses to tie into it. As I stated earlier, they've lost almost seven hundred thousand dollars just in connection fees. And they also lost the fact that every quarter they would get the additional sewer fees because it's three times the amount of your water bill. So that's going on and on and talked about for a very long time. So all these fees are gone. So I'm afraid that the argument that, oh, this is very important, if we let these people go or, you know, we're not connected for another two years, it's well onto the Water and Sewer Department. I'm sorry, I don't buy that argument at all. I agree with Mr. Gavere, I wish there was a better way to do this. And we tried, we tried repeatedly. But each time, we were told we would not get anything at all and that was the end of the story. So as I said, Mr. Moderator, I appeal to the town, to all the people here in the meeting, that we've all been impacted greatly over the last five years, excuse me, eighteen months regarding this pandemic. It was devastating to a lot of people. As I stated, we took some serious financial and personal hits and it's very hard to recover from that. And I'll always ask these two years, if there's a better way to do it, I'm more willing to come in and work with everyone to achieve those goals. But right now, it's important that this pass. Also, with all due respect to Mr. Gavere, yeah, I received a letter saying that you will be fined one hundred dollars a day. I have it in black and white. And Mr. Units also said that they have their law to make sure people tie in. So yeah, it is actionable, they can use it, and it would be absolutely devastating and ruinous to myself and to my neighbors, only nine of us, if that should go through. We would have no recourse. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article thirteen? As amendment, thank you. Seeing none, we will move to the vote. Article thirteen as amended requires a majority vote for passage. All those in favor of Article thirteen as amended, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? If you could keep your hands up, please. Okay, thank you, you can put your hands down. We're going to take a standing vote. That was too close for me at all, so I would ask the town clerk to organize her staff for a standing vote. So please stay where you are and you will be instructed to stand up by the town clerk when it's appropriate. All those in favor of Article thirteen as amended, please signify by standing in place, please. Please stay standing until your instructor sits down. Thank you, you may be seated. All those opposed to Article thirteen as amended, please signify by standing in place. You may be seated, thank you. Article thirteen requires a majority vote for passage and Article thirteen has passed by majority vote as determined by the standing vote. Instructed, I should announce the numbers. There were thirty-seven votes in favor and twenty-eight votes against. So Article thirteen passes by majority vote. Article fourteen?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to approve Article fourteen as printed in the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting warrant to transfer the amount of two, twenty-four hundred dollars from free cash for this purpose and to authorize the town accountant in consultation with the town manager to allocate amounts to the appropriate departments.
Thank you, is there any discussion on Article fourteen? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Article fourteen requires a majority for passage. All those in favor of Article fourteen, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article fourteen passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator. Article fifteen?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of one hundred ten thousand dollars from free cash to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund established to cover the unfunded actuarial liability for our retirees' health care and life insurance benefits.
Thank you, is there any discussion on Article fifteen? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Article fifteen requires a majority for passage. All those in favor of Article fifteen, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article fifteen passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator. Article sixteen?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of four hundred thousand dollars to the stabilization fund in accordance with GL Chapter forty, Section five B.
Thank you, is there any discussion on Article sixteen? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, but just to clarify, these funds are coming from free cash.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on Article fourteen, sixteen? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Article sixteen requires a majority for passage. All those in favor of Article sixteen, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article sixteen passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Francis?
I move to reconsider Article thirteen.
We are at the end of the floor and I was about to close the meeting, which would effectively meet that goal if it were acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. With no other business before the meeting, I declare the town meeting closed. Thank you for coming tonight.